Okay, well, let's go ahead and call the meeting to order, and if you're able, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, veritable, just as it is.
All right, Madam Clerk, roll, please.
Mayor Pape.
Here.
Councilmember Chaveta.
Here.
Councilmember Hands.
Here.
Councilmember Caldwell.
Here.
Councilmember Leahy.
Here.
Councilmember Neal.
Here.
Councilmember Ryder.
Here.
Councilmember Silvers.
Here.
Councilmember Yodrich.
Here.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I'd like to start off this evening in recognition of the fact that this is September 11th, and as all of you, at least, or most of you, I see there's a few younger than, that maybe weren't here, nine eleven of two thousand and one, we had a, one of the most terrible terroristic attacks occurred on the United States of America, and over three thousand people's lives were lost that day, three hundred forty-three firefighters, almost a hundred other civil service employees, police and port of authority people, and then a lot of heroes were around that day. Since that time, a lot, thousands of others have probably, possibly died as a result of the things they breathed in that day and working those scenes, and even the citizens and the visitors that were there. Considering all that and the fact that it is on, nine eleven is today, I'd like to, just a moment of silence, just to, in recognition of that date that we don't ever forget. Okay, thank you. First item up then, this evening, is our public items. I do have one individual, Mr. Groan here has signed up. I think you're going to be coming up. I tried to make myself a note. Raise your hand if I miss you, Billy, later. But anything that isn't on the agenda this evening is an opportunity to come before the council and say things. If, is there anybody that doesn't preclude you since you have not signed up from coming forward at this time? Does anybody have anything else that isn't on the agenda that would like to come forward and talk to the council about? Okay, I don't see anybody rushing to the podium, so don't let me forget you. I'll try to make sure I get you then. So, thank you. We'll close out public items this time. Then the next item up is the Consent Agenda. The Consent Agenda, all items under this heading are considered to be routine by the City Council, may be enacted by one motion, no separate discussion of the items listed Councilmember requests. Considering we only have one item on that list, is there anybody that wants to talk about that item before I call for a motion? Yeah, so you know what I necessarily wanted to talk about it. I would entertain a motion. Okay, Ms. Yodrich, go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, I move that the council approve Consent Agenda item number one.
Okay, we have a motion. Do I have a second? Okay, Ms. Hands.
I second that.
Madam Clerk, we have a motion, a second.
Councilmember Chaveta.
Aye.
Councilmember Hands.
Aye.
Councilmember Caldwell.
Aye.
Councilmember Leahy.
Aye.
Councilmember Neal.
Aye.
Councilmember Ryder.
Aye.
Councilmember Silvers.
Aye.
Councilmember Yodrich.
Aye.
Motion passes eight zero.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Well, this is always an exciting time when I get to read proclamations, and we have two this evening, and the first one is, well, I'll just read it. Whereas, September is known across the United States as National Suicide Prevention Awareness Month to help promote awareness and resources available to us and our community to learn how to help those around us and how to talk about suicide without increasing the risk of harm. And whereas, suicidal thoughts can affect anyone regardless of age, gender, race, orientation, income level, religion, or background. And whereas, according to the CDC, each year more than forty-one thousand people die by suicide, or one every twelve minutes. Suicide is the tenth leading cause of death among adults in the U.S., and it is the second leading cause of death among people aged ten to twenty-four. And whereas, many people who struggle with suicidal thoughts have not received effective behavioral health services for many reasons, including the difficulty of assessing services, the stigma of behavioral health treatment, and the stigma associated with losing a loved one to suicide. And whereas, we remind all residents that we are silently fighting our own life struggles and encourage them to take the time to ask about the well-being of their family, friends, and neighbors, to genuinely convey their appreciation for their existence by any gesture, including a simple phone call, handshake, or hug, which can go a long way towards helping someone realize that suicide is not the answer. Now therefore, I, Bob Pape, by the virtue of the authority vested in me as the mayor of Merriam, Kansas, do hereby proclaim September twenty twenty-three as National Suicide Prevention Awareness Month proclaimed on this eleventh day of September twenty twenty-three. My understanding is that we have Johnson County Mental Health Director Tim Dewis is in the audience, and if you'd like to come forward, and we'll give you this proclamation, but I understand you'd like to say a few words, Mr. Dewis.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Again, my name's Tim Dewis. I'm the director of Johnson County Mental Health Center, and I just wanted to be here tonight and thank you, thank the council, thank the city staff for making this proclamation. The first step in for, in an effort for us to really help our communities become mentally healthy is for us to de-stigmatize mental health and have conversations. And so, this year, with Mental Suicide Prevention Month, the tagline is hashtag you, excuse me, hashtag you be the one to. And so, as the mayor said, be the one to give a hug, be the one to provide a handshake, be one to ask how someone's doing. We can all take that opportunity to ask someone how they're doing, and just that pure gesture will help us prevent deaths by suicide. I see that we have the nine eight eight call sign. That was something that occurred over the last, the last year. Johnson County Mental Health Center will take forty thousand calls this year alone on our call center site, and so if someone calls nine eight eight here in Johnson County, it comes locally to our call center here in Johnson County so that we can provide people services and connect them with services here in our community. So again, thank you for this opportunity to appear before you. Thank you for having the foresight to proclaim September Suicide Prevention Month. I appreciate it.
Okay, well, thank you for being here, and we'll get a picture, and I'll give you this proclamation. So, do you want to have any questions for Director Dewis, by any chance? Okay, I'll be right down. Hang on. And I get to have two proclamations this evening. All right. On this, the second one, I'll just read it here so everybody gets to know what it's about. Whereas, Hispanic Heritage Week started in nineteen sixty-eight under President Lyndon Johnson and was expanded by President Ronald Reagan in nineteen eighty-eight to cover a thirty-day period starting on September fifteenth to observe Hispanic Heritage Month. And whereas, Hispanic Heritage Month celebrates the histories, cultures, and contributions of those whose ancestors were indigenous to North America as well as Spain, Mexico, the Caribbean, and Central and South America. And whereas, Hispanic Heritage Month creates awareness of the significant strides of Hispanics in the economic, political, and social growth of the U.S. And whereas, Hispanic Heritage Month is tied to the celebration of the rich tapestry of our community and reflects an array of distinct culture. And whereas, the city of Merriam is a welcoming and inclusive community that is dedicated to improving the quality of life for those we serve. Now therefore, I, Bob Pape, by the virtue of the authority vested in me as the mayor of Merriam, Kansas, do hereby proclaim September fifteenth to October fifteenth, twenty twenty-three, as Hispanic Heritage Month, and encourage our community to join us in celebrating the great contributions of Hispanic and Latino Americans to our city, state, and nation, proclaim to this eleventh day of September twenty twenty-three. I don't think we have anyone that's going to be receiving this, so I don't know that we have a photo op, do we, for this? Okay. All right. But, but let's, let's give recognition. Thank you. All right. So, I, it looks like we have, maybe the chief is coming up next for our, we have some new police officers that he's going to introduce us to.
Thank you, Mayor, City Council, Darren McGloughlin, Chief of Police. Tonight, it's my great pleasure to introduce you to some of the newest members of the Merriam Police Department. The seven officers I'm going to introduce have a year or less of experience with our department. I thought it was important for you all to get to see their smiling faces and meet them as unofficially as you can, so that way, when you see them, you'll understand who they are.
Bob, here, form a line for me. As you can see, we've had a little bit of turnover at the police department. We've had some people who have retired, had other officers who had just got out of the business, and we had a couple that leave to go to their agencies. Happy to say that we've been able to hire some very fine young men and women to replace them. So, starting on the list here, when I call your name, go ahead and step forward. Grant Michael. Grant has completed the Johnson County Police Academy and our PTO training program, and he is out working the streets of Merriam as a fully qualified and trained officer. So, thank you, Grant. Dax Driscoll. Dax came to us from another agency out of state. He has completed his PTO program. He didn't need to go to the academy, and he's working the streets. Thank you. Austin Zineski. Austin is currently in the Johnson County Police Academy. He is set to graduate at the end of this month, and he'll start his PTO program, and hopefully he'll complete that sometime right after the first of the year. Dalton Peebler. Dalton is currently waiting to go to the Johnson County Police Academy. His class will start in October, and after he completes that, we're looking for him to be completing training sometime around February or March. Devin Newman. Devin is also set to go to the Johnson County Police Academy in October. Again, complete his training. He should be out sometime at the beginning of February or March. Gary Young. Gary is set to start the Police Academy in Hutchinson, Kansas, in October. We're crossing our fingers still. There might be some spaces opening up in Johnson County, so he doesn't have to drive all the way to Hutch. But Sidney. Sidney Snyder, again, just recently started with us. She is also scheduled to go to the Police Academy in Hutchinson in October. So, those are your new officers.
Okay. Welcome to Team Merriam, and we look forward to seeing you out there on the street, but I don't want to see you from my car, so.
They can't even see your car, it's so small.
Okay.
It's my best side. It's my best side.
And you recognized it. That's good.
Yeah, I'm not stupid.
I think Chief McGloughlin's got the next one as well, too.
May not be good-looking, but I'm not stupid.
All right. I think we have the Hometown Hero Award, I believe, coming up.
Yes, we do.
What about that, chief?
So, on the evening of August seventeen, twenty twenty-three, Jared and his girlfriend Jerry called the police dispatch to have the police check on their eighty-two-year-old neighbor whom they had not seen in three days, which was odd. They usually see him at least daily, according to them. It was unusual for them to go without seeing their neighbor for this long. When the police arrived, they found the elderly neighbor laying on the floor inside the residence. He'd been lying on the floor for at least two days, was unable to get up, and sustained a serious injury from a fall. Officers were able to get the elderly gentleman to medical attention they needed. Had they not called dispatch and reported not seeing their neighbor for an extended period of time, there was a high likelihood that their neighbor would not have survived. In addition, Gary and Jared, Jerry also helped their neighbor by watching his dog until the family could make arrangements to have the dog cared for. Mayor, if you'd like to come down and present the award, and they are here. Do I like to come forward, please? They hit it for me.
We have to be really careful because he's come off. Yeah, okay. So, anyway.
I'm Jerry.
Is that, look at both of them? Okay, well, let's turn around you. Let's get a photo. We're.
Ralph is right there.
He's right there.
Oh, okay. We didn't know you were coming.
Awesome.
Want to come up?
Come on up. I think it's appropriate for you to come up, sir.
Absolutely.
Come right in. I think you should be in the center, sir. Come on. Come on. You'd be in the middle of the picture. Let's turn around her and face Jenna, and let's get a, get a picture. Very special neighbors you have there, isn't it? Yeah. That's very fortunate.
It's okay. We know.
Well, come on over here, sir. I'm so glad that you, you were able to make it with us here today.
Well, when I heard he's getting a re, come here.
It's okay. Well, let's get a picture for this, this occasion. There's a ward. You have a well-starred crying here. And that's why we live in Merriam. Okay. All right. Let's see what's next on the list here. We've got the hometown hero. It looks like the next item up, we seem to have the chief here all night, don't we? Well, I do have a few things for the mayor's report before we move on. Sorry, chief, but you can stand there. I'll just talk around you.
Be happy to.
But I always like to take an opportunity to, to say a few things. It's kind of gone on in the last couple of weeks, anyway. I attended the Johnson County, Wyandotte County Mayor's Dinner, which was hosted over in Overland Park, and it's always good to find out what's going on in our other communities around us, and to know that they have more problems than we have. So, that's, makes me feel better. But, and then the Tim Murphy Art Gallery had its opening night, and unfortunately, I wasn't there because I was watching the Chiefs lose, and that wasn't such a good, good opportunity. But was anybody else ready to, able to attend that? Okay, Amy did. Okay. All right. Thank you, Ms. Ryder. She was able to attend that. That's one of the events that goes on periodically every month. It's my understanding that Councilmember Hands attended the Climate Action Summit. Would you like to share a few things about what occurred at the summit?
I did. While you all were having fun doing other things on Saturday, I was at the Climate Action Summit KC and getting some really good information about what all of our neighbors are doing on both sides of the state line, as well as heard a couple of inspirational speakers that pointed out that no one of us can do everything, but each of us can do something. And just think that's important as we're trying to take care of our earth.
Okay. Well, thank you for doing that for us and sharing that report. Okay, I know that I, Councilmember, if I miss anybody, let me know. Councilmember Silvers, Riders, Caldwell, and Yodrich attended the Merriam Turkey Creek Car, Truck, and Motorcycle Show. I think that was the list of the people I saw. You know, as, as the mayor, I get to pick a car down there, and that's, that's really one of the toughest jobs I have, is to try to pick one vehicle. We had a record three hundred and fifteen, correct, if I'm correct me if I'm wrong, three hundred and fifteen entrants this year, largest we've ever had, and, and the weather was perfect. I was in charge of the weather, and it was really nice. But also, but anyway, to make a long story short, we do want to thank Director Slocum and her staff and all the volunteers and the business people that put that on. That's a great event. Everybody had a really good time, and I always look forward to that event every year as well. So, it's one of our largest events, I believe. So, prior to the council meeting, for those of you that weren't there or didn't realize it, but the council and the Flags for Freedom Committee and the Park and Rec Board met upstairs, and we talked about the Flags for Freedom event that's going to occur next year, and hopefully, maybe there'll be a little transitioning where the city's going to take a little more involvement in that, and we'll have a great event coming up over the Fourth of July week. And that was the last thing I think I had that I know about that went on. I'll defer to Mr. Engel for other upcoming events. I didn't get a chance to check the calendar. But, okay, having said that, I think my mayor's report is done, chief. I'm going to turn it over to you for your request.
Thank you, Mayor, City Council, Darren McGloughlin, Police Chief. I'm here to ask to purchase two new patrol vehicles. One of them is a replacement for a vehicle that we already had in our fleet that was destroyed in a traffic accident up on I-35. Driver ran into the rear of Unit Seven, which was a twenty twenty-three Dodge patrol vehicle. Can't ever get them to run into one of my old cars. It's scheduled to be replaced. I always have to take out the new ones. We were reimbursed to the sum of thirty-four thousand, four-hundred-and-seventy-two dollars and twenty-eight cents for that vehicle. And then the other vehicle that I'm asking for is actually one that's budgeted for twenty twenty-four, but like I explained a couple of meetings ago, the order window just came available. They're shortened duration. So, we're going to go ahead and, if the council approves, place that order, and we don't anticipate that vehicle being built or delivered prior to January of twenty twenty-four. That vehicle, both vehicle prices are thirty-nine thousand, nine hundred and ninety dollars each. This is below the forty-five thousand dollars that is budgeted for the twenty twenty-four vehicle, so that will come in under budget. The other difference between the insurance payout and the new vehicle to replace it, that, those funds are available for the vehicle I bought this year that we didn't expend all those funds for, and some other equipment reserve that I didn't expend those funds for. So, we don't have to ask for contingency. Any questions?
Any questions for Chief McGloughlin? No questions. Explained it well. I would entertain a motion for that, then. Ms. Hands.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I move that the council approve the purchase of two twenty twenty-four Dodge Durango patrol cars.
Okay, I would entertain a second. Okay. Oh, Mr. Silvers. Oh, well, we don't get to calling you very often. Go ahead. She's, she's deferring.
I second that.
Okay. We have a motion, a second, Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Hands.
Aye.
Councilmember Caldwell.
Aye.
Councilmember Leahy.
Aye.
Councilmember Neal.
Aye.
Councilmember Ryder.
Aye.
Councilmember Silvers.
Aye.
Councilmember Yodrich.
Aye.
Councilmember Chaveta.
Aye.
Motion passes eight zero.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Next item up is consider approval of additional power upgrades to the Merriam marketplace. Looks like Director Slocum at the podium.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Before you this evening is a proposal to expand the power at the Merriam marketplace in the amount of fifty-three thousand, nine hundred and sixteen dollars. Just a little bit of history, for those of you that don't know the history of the Merriam marketplace. It was designed in August of two thousand, was the final design plan, and grand opened as the new home of the farmer's market in two thousand and one. Since that time, there have been several electrical additions to the power sources there. That includes, in two thousand and three, we added east and west parking light poles and night security lights. In two thousand and eleven, a digital sign was installed, and there were sound system upgrades. In two thousand and seventeen, we started phase one conversion to LED, and in two thousand and eighteen, we completed the conversion to LED. In addition to these improvements, staff has diligently worked to program the pavilion for numerous special events. In the early years, there were summer concerts, food truck events with music, and continuing today, the Turkey Creek Car and Motorcycle Show, which just completed its twenty-third year with a record number of three hundred and fifteen entries. New in the lineup is Merriam Drive Live. With this event expanding this year to include four bands, the tasting event, and a cornhole tournament, we realized last year power wasn't sufficient. We took the steps earlier in the year to solicit bids from three different contractors to clean up the existing panel, label circuits, check power at all existing circuits, and get all existing power to work. Unfortunately, this still isn't enough to power the event sufficiently, and so what we're here tonight is asking for that expanded power. Of the three solicited vendors on phase one of the project, only two submitted bids, with Electrical Corporation of America being the best in low bid per their hourly rate sheet. In addition, they were also far more responsive to the request for service. At the completion of phase one, ECA, as we call them, quoted phase two, which is the work before you this evening. This is to add sixteen dedicated one hundred and twenty-volt, twenty amp receptacles to the pavilion. Each corner of the marketplace will have additional four receptacles to support the required power for the growth of events like MDL. ECA is prepared to begin work immediately upon approval, with the work scheduled to take approximately fifteen days to complete. MDL is nineteen days from tomorrow. Just a little tidbit of information there. So, it will be done in time for MDL. Any kind of repairs, they will bore, public works will replace the boring with asphalt. So, I am happy to answer any questions in regards to this project.
Any questions for Director Slocum? Give Mr. Leahy.
Did you say this was part, the second phase of a project?
Yes. Phase one was when they came in earlier this, this year and tried to organize the panel and label things and get everything to work like it was supposed to. So, once they did that, then we realized we didn't have enough power to move on, like to power everything. So, we'd either have to have a generator on-site, or we'd have to figure out how to work with our electrical components.
The other part was, I, I thought the part of the process was to make sure that the power would support food trucks.
I think that's coming.
Is that the next phase?
Phase.
Okay. So, we're not providing power for food, available power for a food truck at the marketplace?
There is power for food trucks along the poles on the, I have to get my directions right, on the east side. We can plug in, so Saturday, food trucks plugged in on Saturday on the east side. The power I think you're talking about is more along the promenade.
Well, I.
Project.
Not exactly. I wanted, I was, I thought we were providing enough power for a food truck to be able to plug in and not run off a generator at the marketplace proper, like within the parking lot.
They, well, they can, just to split hairs, they can currently do that in the parking lot on the east side. It's just not under the pavilion.
Yeah, that's fine. I just wanted to make sure I understood what was going to be.
Yeah. This is, this is to support some more of the events and special events that are occurring.
No, that's fine. I just wanted to make sure I understood.
Also, what, also part of what phase one was, was because for the street project, we will be able to power food trucks on the entryway, assuming that the street project is, goes forward as currently designed. So, we wanted to make sure that the power was done to support that. So, if, we, we've maybe thrown food trucks around in a couple different manners.
Okay, Ms. Ryder.
Is there a lot of asphalt or cement work that will be needing to be done as well? Just small bore holes?
Just small, boring. Yeah, it'll, and it's something. Yeah, it'll, and it's something that Public Works can easily manage based on.
Probably two, three foot wide path.
Any, any other questions? Director Slocum. Okay, I see no other questions.
Thank you.
Thank you. I would entertain a motion, then, for this request. Ms. Yodrich.
Mr. Mayor, I move that the council approve additional power upgrades to the Merriam Marketplace in the amount of fifty-three thousand, nine hundred and sixteen dollars.
Okay, we have a motion. Do I have a second?
And I second that.
Madam Clerk, we have a motion and a second.
Councilmember Caldaw.
Aye.
Councilmember Leahy.
Aye.
Councilmember Neal.
Aye.
Councilmember Ryder.
Aye.
Councilmember Silvers.
Aye.
Councilmember Yodrich.
Aye.
Councilmember Chaveta.
Aye.
Councilmember Hands.
Aye.
Motion passes eight zero.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Okay, looks like the next item up is community improvement district policy discussion.
That'll be me, if you'll allow me to stay seated so I can take notes. Julie, you can take me through this presentation, I assume. So the next item on the agenda is the city council has a goal to establish a CID, Community Improvement District Policy. The city currently does not have any established community improvement districts, nor does it have a CID policy. So that is a standing city council goal. So as staff continues to put together components of a CID policy that we can present to the city council, we thought it was important to come forward with some of the debatable items, perhaps, of things that council would like to see in there, as in incentive policies passed. We usually take a statement to the affirmative in terms of city council will view the following things more favorably than others. So I've got several slides here to just present some, some more or less subject matter topics that we might want to consider for the policy, to say that we would view these things more favorably. We certainly don't have to include them, but a lot of them seem to reflect conversations that we've had over the last several years about incentives in general, or have been included in the TIF conversation when we redid the TIF policy last year. So, that being said, most of what the TIF policy will be is its statutory requirements, its process. I think what's important in terms of the meat and potatoes, to make sure that staff is aligned with what the council's goals are, is that these considerations of things that we would view more favorably need to be hashed out. So we're not necessarily going to solve or look for any great approval of these items tonight. These are simply discussion items that we would put into the policy when we share it with bond council and our financial advisors, so that they can weigh in on it and tell us those are good ideas, those are great ideas, or those are poor ideas, which they are very honest people, and they will tell us those things. And then we can report back to council and provide a draft for council to actually sink their teeth into and further the conversation. So again, I think a lot of these probably are no brainers. They reflect conversations we had, but wanted to make sure that we had a conversation about it, and staff could get some good direction on what to include in that policy. So please feel free to provide either head nods, or yes, you like it, or we can have further conversation about any of these things. Yes, sir?
I was just wanting to get my mind around what, what the objective of the CID, the state provided this mechanism to fund development or help subsidize developments. And is there a but-for provision in the CID like there is in the TIF?
There, in statute, there is not necessarily a but-for. You certainly could have a but-for statement in your, in your policy. You could say that we would only do this if there could be some hardship or extraordinary costs that are indicated.
Just in general, you know, when you're dealing with, well, essentially, public funding for private development, you know, there, to me, it seems like there needs to be some, some reason why that funding is needed, as opposed to just because, you know, we feel like, you know, subsidizing the cost of development. And so I would look, you know, look to find some, something explicitly stating some, some reasons that we should consider such a, such a, an incentive. And I don't know whether that's a but-for in provision or not, but I'd like to see something other than just because they asked for it.
Sure, when we get to that point, I think that's, I think that'll be a valid consideration.
Mr. Caldaw?
Yeah, a couple of things. One is, I would like us to, the money should be used for an extraordinary item that is shared by multiple companies, such as a parking garage, a pedestrian walkway, green space, but it needs to be shared by more than one company.
The amenity or the project.
Whatever it is, and it needs to be truly extraordinary, not just build a building. And the other thing is that we treat the funds much like we do TIF funds, and that we hold them and reimburse when that specific obligation comes due and needs to be paid. Not just, not just collect the money and have the state send it to the developer.
That, yeah, that, that is how CID works, yeah. We, it would be based on reimbursement, and it, those funds would come to us. We, we would possess those funds. They would not go straight to the, any developer.
Thank you. Go ahead, Ms. Yodrich.
These are pretty high level. I'm comparing them to what we have in our TIF policy, which is right in front of me. So if I get too detailed, reel, reel me back in. In our TIF policy, we also have a piece that promotes project labor agreements and setting wage rates at local or prevailing standards. Is that two?
I've got four slides.
I was about to ask, do you have more slides, sir?
Just one slide.
Okay, I was going to say, we're real high.
Yeah, this is just one slide. I've got more slides.
I go back now.
There we go.
Yeah.
Maybe we should, can we hold off questions till we get through the slides, and then we'll let, we'll ask Mr. Engel.
That's a great idea.
Appreciate it. So this is really broken up into, again, four slides. The first one would be projects that are just general considerations we would want considered in a project that's presented for council consideration to establish the CID. So from some general considerations, these are things that I believe warrant conversation and potential inclusion in policy if, if there's an advocate on the council for it. First would be a general consideration would be the cost. That could be lower or higher. Does the council have a feel for if cost should be a consideration in CID? Whether that is, hey, it should be a big project, or it should be a, or it could be a small project. And we don't have to have anything other than costs. We can make a statement in the policy that simply says, cost will be a general consideration when we are, when we are reviewing if a CID is something that we want to do. Do we believe that cost should be a consideration, or do we not care at all what the cost of it is? Would we use cost as a consideration for approving a CID? That's a question. Would we use cost?
So let's nod our head yes to Mr. Engel if we think cost is a consideration.
Yes, cost is a consideration.
Okay, cost is a consideration.
Thank you. Second one with a greater amount, how much money is the developer coming? Is that a consideration? Meaning that a developer says, hey, we're going to pay 50% versus another developer that might say, we're going to pay 70%? Is that a consideration? Yes. Type of risk mitigation mechanisms. What that would be is clawbacks. That would be, how are we making sure that we, the developer, they, the developer, doing what they say they're going to do and minimize? That could be that, hey, they're going to secure material costs at the beginning of the project to keep overruns from going over. Something where, as opposed to just going, hey, it is what it is, and we'll just roll with, we'll just roll with how the structure is, because CIDs can be open for multiple years. So you could have, unlike a project, you could have a series of projects in a CID, spread out over 10, 15, up to the statutory maximum, 22 years. So having some sort of risk mitigation mechanism in there helps protect the amount of money that we would reimburse to the developer. Is that something that we would find some value and importance in? Higher level of experience and stability of the developer, as opposed to somebody that, hey, I think I can do this versus I have done this. I think that's probably a no-brainer. And then if it's a redevelopment, are the tenants supportive? There's a world that exists where you could have business, the, say, a developer that owns a shopping center, and the tenants maybe aren't fully supportive of the CID. They don't want their customers to be taxed for the CID for the benefit of the owner because they may not see the value in it. Do we think that it's important that the tenants are supportive of it? Okay, I'm hearing affirmative on all of those, batting a thousand so far. This is some specific project criteria, criteria that, that we may want to consider. Redevelopment of existing commercial sites versus new development. Do we have a feel for one or the other? Does the council care, or is it just some sort of investment? Does it matter one way or another? Okay. Stimulates mixed use with residential? Do we want to make a statement about mixed-use development? Do we want to, would we view that more favorably than perhaps another development? Including a residential piece? Okay. Construction of infrastructure beyond what the city would normally do. I used examples up there. You might have a development that has a park. There are developments in some communities where they include parks in their CID project, bus stops, roads, charging stations. Those would be infrastructure that perhaps the city would not be installing on that property or related to that project, but they would do, and we would view that more favorably in terms of giving them an affirmative vote to establishing a CID if they were to do things such as this. Last one, would we view more favorably any projects that were in areas with specific site constraints? You know, you might have a site that's developable from, you know, when you're standing at the curb, but once you get in there, you've got unsuitable soils. We've got quite a few properties in our community that were in proximity to old gas stations from 50, 60, 70, 80 years ago, that their soils are not in good place, so there might be some soil remediation. Actually, there was soil remediation at the Kmart site, not that we gave them a CID. Bedrock at the Kmart site, we actually had a potential development about 10 years ago, walked away because of the bedrock. You could have access to the right-of-way, depending on what the shape of or the location of that site is, or any of the, or access to utilities. So utilities, think about, if somebody, no one is asking, but if someone wanted to develop the Bass property, you know, you don't have utilities on that site. There would, there, so that could be considered a site challenge. We may not consider it a site challenge, but it could be a site challenge. Are those things that we would be okay with in terms of we would view things favorably if people were going to come in and develop property that probably wouldn't develop on its own if not for? That might be your but-for. Those would, that would be your but-for statement. Okay? Conformance or exceedance of local requirements. So these are things that people would do more, more so than our normal regulations would require. So this would be compliance with the uses and/or areas targeted for development. So if people came in and said, hey, I looked at your comp plan, and your comp plan calls out the Lee Jean site, and we like to bring forward a proposal that meets that, or Merriam Town Center was a focal point of, was one of our nodes that we looked at as part of 2040. If people came in with our comp plan and said, hey, I'd like to do this, would we view that as being more favorable? High degree of architectural design and site layout. That's something that we've heard time and time again from several council members. Enhanced use to landscaping, BMPs for water quality or other sustainable features, whatever those may be, were those things that we would view more favorably, or at least we would want to include in, in our policy. Contain primarily local, and I defined locally as just locally sourced materials in the metro, meaning we would view more favorably people that were buying things in the metro. I mean, clearly, Merriam would be great, but we don't offer the variety of building construction materials that some folks might need, but we would view more favorably those that would be sourced at least in the metropolitan area. Utilize contractors that offer prevailing wages or benefits. Those are going to be opportunities for workers that, for federal projects, we have what's called Davis Bacon. Just means that folks make a living wage and are offered benefits from their contractors. Seen head nods on that for being, we're flying through this quick, more favorably. Then there's a couple of things that we may not want to include a statement of what we would view less favorably, but these are things that have come up in some of the conversations that we've had over the last several years about incentives. So we don't necessarily have to include them, but I felt like I wouldn't be doing my job if I didn't bring them back to the council and seek some guidance on them. So we had a conversation about, not necessarily we don't want grocery stores, but we would not want to provide CID and have an extra sales tax be on a grocery store. Is that still something that, again, it doesn't mean we wouldn't do it, it just means we would view it less favorably. We would not be excited about having a CID on it, on groceries. Businesses that have previously received incentives, again, doesn't mean we can't do it, it just means we would not be as excited about it as we might be if it was the first time. Is that, okay? Clearly create an unfair economic advantage versus other existing businesses. You know, that's kind of, that is something that has been brought up, where we've had people that were asking for incentives, hunting for incentives, and they would have brought in a business that we already have a business of, and that was a conversation that we had at that time, this is quite a few years ago, that, hey, would that be fair? There was a kind of a fairness conversation that we had, that we didn't think that if we were a competing business that didn't receive those incentives, or was, you know, stuck in a 30-year-old building, and we've got another one that's stuck in a 30-year-old building, that we would give incentives to this one, but not this one, because it might create an unfair advantage. So that was just something that was brought up during previous conversations. Again, none of these particular items on any of these slides are deal killers or promises of incentives. Either way, they're just simply things that the council would like in policy to say, hey, these are the type of things that we would be inclined to consider. These are the type of things that we wouldn't probably be very excited about. Are there other items, whether they're less favorably or more favorably, that we're missing?
I, you can put this on the more or less, however you word it, but it needs to bring incremental business to the city.
Okay, what, could you define that for me?
Yeah, we have a shopping mall that might need a facelift.
Okay.
Giving it a facelift does not bring incremental business.
Gotcha.
If you change it, make it recreate it, so it's got more retail, becomes incremental.
Understood. Yep. Is, is that something, do we, does the council generally agree that that is something? It'd probably be a favorable, I think, statement we would put in there, that, that we would, we would want to expand the tent. We don't want to just shuffle it around. We want a bigger tent, bigger piece of pie.
Well, but I'm thinking about the Prairie Village shops, or the Corn Square, I guess.
Sure.
Because I'm not sure that they increased the number of businesses, but the facelift that they got definitely made it a more vibrant, but I don't know how they measure that and can sell that ahead of time.
You know, and I don't know how you would.
Yeah, okay.
But I think, I just think that's part of the statement, when city staff sits down with the developer and starts having these conversations, that that needs to be an expectation.
How's it going to be better?
When this is done, there will be more sales.
Okay.
Yeah. And maybe that's, maybe that's, is, would that be, I mean, it cuts right to the point. Is that maybe a statement to the affirmative that it promotes economic growth? It promotes the growth in sales and/or property tax? And then I guess a question, maybe specifically for you, but any of the council, if you had, because I was in Prairie Village when we did the CIDs there, and they're the only CIDs that I've ever had any exposure to. There, I think the motivation behind that was that if we invest and we update those shopping centers, the new tenants that would come, if not in new buildings, they would be of, it would be an upgrade. if not in new buildings, they would be of, it would be an upgrade. Like, we would get something that has more sales because this is now a perhaps more desirable center. If not necessarily we have new shops or new buildings, we have, when it, we can raise the rents and we will get people that will be commensurate to those higher rents.
You know, there's often a misconception in the public that, uh, we all get together and give developers money.
Sure.
And it's an expense to the city and it costs the city. And we need to change that perception to people to understand that it is an investment in the future. And that we're not going to do it if it doesn't have a payback to the city and to the city residents. And so I think by some wording in our policy, that's very specific, that this is viewed as an investment, not a cost to the city.
Yeah, uh, uh, great point. And we will, as a further conversation, trying to take this in bite-sized pieces. We will have, as we do in our other incentive policies, they are, we start them with, not necessarily whereas's, but they are aspirational. They are, this is what we want, this is why we would do this type statements, um, that I think we would absolutely include that, hey, this is, you know, we, we would have our but-for statements. We would have our, this is why we do these things. We're not in the habit of, you know, it's the judicious use of incentives for the long-term return on investment of this incentive that we, that the rest of what follows gives it, effectuates it. So, yeah, no, I, I, we, we will actually, that will be a part of the policy. Yeah, I agree.
Yes, ma'am.
Can you go back a couple of slides?
Can you go back a couple of slides to stop? Um, so the stimulates mixed use including residential urban development. How does that work in the residential urban development piece of that? Does, does the CID also apply to residential developments?
In, in the mixed use, in the context of mixed use versus just your plain commercial. So mixed use, so, uh, this statement would apply to, if they would have asked, if we'd have had this and Drake Development would have come in from Marion.
Yeah.
This statement would explain what they're doing.
Cool, so how would that apply to the actual apartment buildings then? Because typically we would see this through, I don't know, like, return through a sales tax or something. How would that, how would we see that come through in a residential building?
So you, if you just outlined it around the residential, it wouldn't generate the return. But if you were to say, we're going to create a community, for example, this isn't happening, but just let's play with it for a second. Marion Town Center, if they came in and said, we want to create a community improvement district across all of Marion Town Center, and somewhere on that property, we wanted to build residential, you could generate the sales tax at all of Marion Town Center and have it, if we agree to it, benefit the residential component. Does that answer your question?
Hmm, yeah, maybe.
So it's residential within urban develop, which is, urban develop just means.
My concern would be that they would be using something like rent or, you know, like jacking up a rent price or something to help generate CID money. Does that make sense?
I don't believe CID is applied to rent.
Okay.
CID is just point of sale.
That's it?
You're right. It could, it could benefit the residential, but I don't think CID. Now, if they sell things in there, you know, gift shop or something like that, but I don't believe, because there's no services provided there. It's on services or point of sale.
Okay.
And so I do not, I do not believe, I could be wrong because it's been a while since I looked at the statute, but I don't believe that the residential, just the rents would generate that. But you could use the CID to benefit improvements to the residential or the construction. CID is very, very broad, which in my opinion is why we need a policy because you can do a variety of things. You could pay for security. We could, you know, uh, you could pay for entertainment. You could pay for, it's, it fills every hole that TIF doesn't. So, I mean, you really, anything that a developer might want money for that's not infrastructure, including vertical construction, for rent buy-downs, rent buy-downs meaning like your tenants, like to say, hey, we're going to charge this tenant less money. We're going to use CID to offset the fact that we're going to charge this tenant because we want this tenant in this development. So it's, so you have to be very specific, especially when it comes down to your redevelopment agreements of what this money's for very specifically and what it's not for, and what happens if you do or you don't do what you're supposed to do, which is your clawback provisions that we put into our redevelopment agreements.
Okay.
So, so that's what we want to, when we do our redevelopment agreements, we want to be very, very careful that we say, hey, this is what it's for. Because it can be, if you're not careful, what, what Councilman McCaldol said, which is basically we just turn the spigot on and the money just keeps going back for something. If we're not careful, we say, no, it's for this.
As long as it doesn't affect housing costs, then in that specific way, then I want to, I'm good.
Okay.
Ms. Ryder, do you have something? Or did, okay.
Are, are there anything that's, that's missing up there? Are there, are there components that we, that we think we would view less favorably or more favorably that aren't on there? Again, we'll wordsmith this a little bit differently. We might combine some of these so we don't have a ten-page policy. We can have an eight-page policy. But, but in terms of intent is really what we're trying to gauge right now.
Good.
Yeah, I appreciate that you put, um, grocery stores on there. That was an item that I brought up at one point. But I would actually like to see that expanded for, um, items that, essential items such as groceries, pharmaceuticals, uh, items like that, that, um, I think that our residents and people in general just need to make, um, be available at a reasonable price. And I think within a CID, an added tax could be a box for people.
So would, so like, uh, Walgreens, you would not want a Walgreens in a, in a CID?
It wouldn't be ideal for me.
It would, it would be less favorably.
For me, it would not be ideal to have a farm, like a Walgreens in a CID.
Okay, is that?
But the pharmacist, the pharmacy part of it is already not going to be taxed, right? The state doesn't tax that.
But they have food and like.
I understand, but are those essentials there?
I mean, it could be to some people.
They can be if you're, we're talking about having a walkable city. And if, um, it, it could be someone's closest means of getting a lot of those items, especially feminine items, band-aid.
Yeah, I was going to say, ask a woman or a person who, yeah.
Good, Ms. Neal.
Yeah, I, uh, kind of along the lines of what, uh, Whitney is kind of got at. Um, I think that, uh, you know, more favorably is a development which in some way, uh, is, helps in the, in the provision of affordable housing. We, you know, we also want to have, uh, have, uh, places where people can afford to live and, and work or, and, and use these developments. The, the problem of affordable housing is, is significant and is likely to get worse. And so if they're coming in and wanting to fund development and it has a residential component, it shouldn't all be the highest-end penthouse apartments or whatever. I mean, there should be something, I think, that we would look favorably on if, if.
A section of income-controlled.
Right.
Area, like we asked, like, I inquired about that when we were doing the Drake development and that didn't happen, so we could look favorably upon that.
So be more favorable, so if we were to just, if we were to add.
Affordability to the, to the residential. Yes, to the residential component.
Again, not precluding the fact that we would be able to do things others, but we, it would be more favorable if it was.
Right.
Affordable housing.
Right.
Is that, is that a general consensus that that would be, from a residential standpoint, affordability would be something we'd be more favorable?
Yeah, Ms. Ryder, go ahead.
Along those lines, um, could they use the money generated from the example you gave earlier with the Marion Town Center? The money generated in the stores nearby, could that be used to reduce the cost of rent for the tenants in a hypothetical apartment complex on that property?
I think it could, yeah, I mean, it could if we, if we allow it. I mean, we, the city has to agree to all of the uses of CID. And we certainly could go through and say, we agree to this, we don't agree to this, we like this, we don't like this. These are, these are things that are, that we would view more favorable. We certainly could, it is up one hundred percent to the city to establish the CID. We are not compelled to do it at all. If, if, if the council decides it is not in the best interest of our residents because there's not a return on investment, if the council decides, hey, we have enough of those or, hey, that competes, or, hey, we don't like that, it's, it operates a little bit differently because it is so broad. So we really can say, no, we will do this. I, you, you can ask for this, but this is what we're willing to do. I mean, we, we, we really can kind of tell them, if you want, if you want a CID, here's what we're willing to do. It's, 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 it's up to you. The point of the policy is that, so, um, folks in the early stages, we can go, here's, here's what the council views, you know, so they can kind of craft something so they don't come and go, hey, here's our proposal. And we go, hey, man, this is a grocery store and a CID, you know, da, da, da. We don't, you know, we don't, this isn't going to happen. It's really so they can really, hopefully, download it off our website, reach out to staff and go, hey, we're looking at this piece of property or these properties, we'd like to do something. What incentives are available? We could go, well, here's TIF, here's CID, here's IRB. Here are the things that we would view favorably. Again, not compelled to say yes to any of them. But, but it helps guide it along. And it helps, it helps not just the current council, but future councils decide, is this something that we agree warrants a CID? And from time to time revisit it because those things might change. Any other questions? Okay, we're slowed down. Mr. Cronin, I know you want to address this.
Well, I actually.
Oh, did you have one?
Well, if we're done with this discussion, I have one thing I wanted to kind of make it off-topic, but it's in relation to this discussion, real quick.
Okay.
Unless.
Stand by, Mr. Cronin, okay, go ahead.
I can do it after public comments if we want to do that.
If it's related, let's.
It's sort of related, yeah. I mean, it's related, yes.
Go ahead.
You could have done it by now.
You have the podium, go ahead, or you have the mic.
It's German. So we've discussed, not only in the TIF policy, but also in this one, we've brought up the idea of, um, favoring projects, uh, projects that promote labor agreements and wages and setting rates. So we've done that in two of our policies so far this year. And I was thinking that if we've already done that in two other policies, why shouldn't we consider doing that outside of our other policies and consider some kind of blanket policy for making, for bidding projects? So, I mean, nothing that would back us into a corner. But I'm talking about, when we always say we bid lowest and best, we, we never really get an answer for what best equals. We know what lowest means because we have a data point for that. But best is usually what we called references. And I think for some of us, it would be easier to know that best actually meant something other than references. So I'm thinking things like looking at OSHA certification, talking about workers' compensation, health insurance for employees, paying employees wages comparable to prevailing wage or Davis Bacon, even though Kansas doesn't do prevailing wage. And working those into our bid process rather than just, you know, asking that of our developers, why wouldn't we, or preferring that of our developers that we work with? If we're going to talk that talk, we should consider walking it as well. I see people nodding at me, but I know it's a, it's a difficult, it's a difficult ask for a full-blown policy, but, I mean, you know, we're a creative council and a flexible council and, and we have a great staff who is, takes things like this and comes up with creative ways to incorporate them into things. And, um, and I just think if we're going to do this, we should also embrace the idea of, like, we take care of our city staff and, you know, we, we go above and beyond for them. And if we have people who are doing work for us, wouldn't we want them to be taken care of if something bad happened to them as well? And if we're hiring those people to work on our city, maybe best means asking some of these questions from the, the contractors that we hire and the bids that we ask for? I don't know.
We certainly, um, it's been pointed out to me that in 2013, there was some legislation perhaps about this that we might need to navigate in terms of prevailing wage, that we'll, we'll have to, we'll just have to look at. We'll have to, to see if there's a path forward and all of that. I mean, there are a variety of, um, small pieces that might be able to get somewhere there, but we might have some legislative.
Sure.
Issues we'll have to navigate.
Yeah, and there's so many other things other than just the wage, I think, that could be bottled up in, into something, but I don't know. I'm saying, I'm like taking a piece of Chris and looking for head nods, but if anybody is interested in pursuing that, it's just something I've been thinking about.
Is this something that wouldn't incorporate into the RFQ process and into our standard work agreements and standard contracts?
That would probably, that would be a council decision.
Whitney, I would agree. Head nod, I agree.
A verbal head nod, it's strong.
Okay, so, Mr. Engler can look into that. We, we certainly can look and see, see what's, what is allowable by statute and see if there's not some way we can navigate that.
Awesome.
And bring something back if that's what the council would like us to do. Okay.
That I would agree with, it needs to be looked at, yes.
Ms. Neal, you have a comment concerning that?
Yeah, under additional considerations, I don't know. I mean, I have a, just a longstanding, um, just distaste for, um, sort of the idea that, uh, projects always need some incentive. And I think that, um, I don't know how to, how to put it in there, but something that suggests that, um, the, we're, we're going to kind of look at these things kind of holistically. And if it's just because the developer feels they are entitled to and needs a certain percentage of their, their project to be funded through additional sales tax and a CID, um, that, that is not enough. There's just definitely got to be some compelling reason that, because we would be making an, an investment of the public's, the public would be making an investment. And the project needs to have, I don't know, I, I'm trying to get at some sort of a sense of why you do this, not just because everybody else asks for it and all the other cities, you know, seem to, uh, agree to some level of CID as part of their portfolio. I, I just, I like the fact that Marion hasn't done that in the past. And I'd kind of like to keep it that way unless there's a real good reason and something that clearly benefits our community. And I think that almost needs to be stated in some manner.
Be part of the preamble.
And that's, and that's, the but-for was part of it, but that's, you know.
Sure.
That's what I'm trying to get at.
Yeah, it'd be part of the preamble.
Okay, thank you. I think you're up, Mr. Cronin. Please, please come forward, state your name and address for the record.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Council, Billy Cronin, 6633 Wed Street. CID sounds great, doesn't it? Who could be against community improvement districts? But like so many terms, the government dreams up, CID hides some ugly drawbacks behind its innocuous name. The two that I care about most are increased taxation in the city of Marion and corporate welfare. Firstly, the foundation of CID is new taxes on the area of our city, whether you call it taxes or not. I can recall multiple times in the last ten years where the city has asked its citizens to support new taxes or renew taxes that were due to expire. And staff was eager to tout the fact that our city doesn't have CID. We were proud of that, that we didn't have CID before. We can rewind, you know, just a couple of years and hear those very words in this very room. Are you ready to change that? Do you think it's worth it to change that? Are you ready to change that? Do you think it's worth it to change that? Additionally, the tax, new taxes will directly harm every Marion business in the district, making them less competitive and less attractive to consumers. It will even hurt Marion businesses not in the district, because shoppers can't just look around and see where the boundary is for CID. So they're just going to associate Marion with higher taxes. Secondly, corporate welfare. I think it's irresponsible to give tax money out, give it away to a single private privileged company or developer to the exclusion of others. And frankly, I don't want new businesses in Marion that aren't useful enough to earn a bank loan, that aren't successful enough in their business plan to pay for their expenses, to pay for their own development. And I don't think that developers respect so much the money that's given to them for free. I've been watching it happen for the last 10 years here. Think about what happened to the giant retail building ready to open where IKEA stands today. It was beautiful, brand new, and it was bulldozed. Think about the ditch, the big ditch car lot on West Frontage, right? That's not, not too far from my house. The city paid to have that filled in and to get a car dealership there, and that never happened. They reneged on their deal. We didn't get the dealership. We got a parking lot there. So corporate welfare is a disaster. Let's learn from the lesson, learn the lesson from what we've seen with TIF and not engage with CID. Let the market operate naturally without handing over our tax money to private developers on a silver spoon that's never quite big enough to satiate them. Lastly, to Bruce's point of making an investment, if you do go the CID route, I would ask that maybe that money is treated as a loan that the businesses need to pay back so that they're still, they have a, they have a hook in the game. What do you call it? They have an incentive to perform well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cronin. Okay, does that wrap up our community?
It does. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, thank you.
Good guidance.
All right, looks like we have a September CID, CIP, excuse me, update, and it looks like, all right.
All right. Good evening, Mayor and Council. So you could not be here unfortunately tonight, so I'm stepping in and taking over. I apologize if she had some other info that she wanted to pass along, but as far as I know, I'm pretty familiar with these projects, so go through these and update you. 55th Street improvements, so Kansas Heavy's still on the hook for some sod areas. Right now is not really a good time to identify which sod's good and bad. So I think it'd be beneficial to maybe push a few more weeks to see if this cooler temperatures and some rain comes in and greens some stuff up. Some stuff that was really bad actually came back before this last dry and heat spell. So they have till November 15th, that window closes for the sod window. Next is Marion Drive Street improvements. BHC Engineering and City Staff met with the Core August 16th and 17th in a charrette, and they developed, well, they discussed developing alternative plans for the flood mitigation. So this project's kind of been put on hold until we can kind of get some better understanding of how that may end up looking in the future. So that's about all I have on that. Maybe Chris can chime in at the end and say some more on the Core. 50th Terrace, England to Kessler Drainage Project. BHC met with the staff on August 9th. I was not present, but I do know that they are continuing on developing the, the plan set for that and getting easements acquired as well. Next is Mill and Overlay Project up in Sherwood Forest. McInnany's just finishing up some kind of checklist items. I believe sod is involved in that as well. So once they get that sod placed, we'll be able to go through the final payment and get that project knocked off our list. And lastly is the sidewalk maintenance program up in 51st Farley, no, 50th Terrace Farley. And they expect to be done within the next couple of weeks. They do have until October 15th to wrap that up, but just kind of slow-going, hot temperatures. Few morning rain showers kind of held them off, so. Any questions?
Any questions for Superintendent Fine? Go ahead, Ms. Hands.
I don't have any questions, but I want to backtrack to my statement about the Climate Action Summit because our CIP guru, whatever. Yes, Todd Veman also attended that. I, I think he learned some things too. We, we had lunch together, so. I was really appreciative he was willing to do that.
Yeah, he said he had a good time.
Really?
For what it's worth.
Yeah, other questions for Superintendent Fine? Okay, all right, I guess you're, guess you're excused.
Cool.
Thanks, sir. Okay, well, let's see, Park and Rec Advisory Board minutes, we're in the packets. Anybody have any questions for Director Slocum? Don't see any, so I think we're good there then. Any other items, Mr. Engel?
Just a couple would echo your thanks to our volunteers. Park and Rec, also specifically City Clerk Pinnock. She plays a big role in acquiring our volunteers and really helps make that event what it is. So I want to thank her as, as well as Park and Rec and all of the volunteers. Again, we can't do it without the volunteers, including the ones on council. Great event. We have a SMEF breakfast on Wednesday. Shawnee Mission Education Foundation will have our local principals in attendance with us to have breakfast. Always a great event for that organization, which benefits our students. We've got our Go Green event at Sylvester Powell that we co-sponsor with other Northeast, Johns County cities. That's going to be Saturday, the 23rd at Mission Community Center, Sylvester Powell Center. And then we have our own Marion Recycle event, which will be Saturday, the 30th of September, which will be at Nation Holdings, the formerly Jean's Building. That's what I know. That's, I'm happy to answer any other questions that you may have.
Any questions for Mr. Engel? I see no questions. I don't see an executive session this evening either.
Not that I'm aware of, no, sir.
All right. Well, I think we're to that stage where I would entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'd be happy to make a motion.
Okay, please, Ms. Hands, go ahead.
Really? Want me to?
Please do.
Really?
Yeah, quickly.
I move, we adjourn.
May I have a motion to have a second? Ms. Yadwicz.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I second.
Okay, Madam Clerk.
All in favor.
Hi.
Meeting's adjourned.